I'm calling this meeting to order. It's amazing, it's July 1st. The year is moving quickly. Glad to have you join us on a day that the Hawks are playing and we don't have as many people even here on the floor. The items we're going to consider here tonight, if recommended by the Planning Commission to council, will be heard on July the 26th. It's a Monday. I'd like to remind everybody that council makes the final decision, we make our recommendation to them. So come back and express your views to city council. We have three items to consider on the agenda tonight. I noticed that one has been deferred. That is Z21-06-V-21. Okay. All right. So you're here for that item? You're welcome to stay, but it's not going to be considered here tonight. We have the minutes from the last meeting. What is the desire of the board?
Make a motion to approve minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and is properly secured. Or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. The first item on the agenda is CU-21-07 Far East Beauty/1115 Upper Hembry Road. And Michael will be presenting.
The first item before you this evening is a conditional use to allow spa services for Far East Beauty, which provides cosmetology and spa services such as facials and waxing. The property is owned O&amp;I Office Institutional, which allows spa services with approval of a conditional use. I have the location map on the overhead. The property is located at 1115 Upper Hembry Road. The applicant's suite is Suite A and the Alpha Medical Plaza. Surrounding properties are zoned O&amp;I and R15 to the north, O&amp;I to the east and south, and City of Roswell to the west. Peach State Pool Service and a residential lot are located to the north. Taylor Oaks subdivision is located to the west, and undeveloped office parcels are located to the south and east. Property was approved in 1988. It is approved as part of a master plan, the Oswald Upper Hembry Master Plan. Alpha Medical Plaza is developed as two condo office buildings. They look as two stories from Upper Hembry Road, but the topography of the property, they're actually three stories on the rear side. And I do have some street view photographs of that plaza. This is from Upper Hembry looking into the plaza. So reading, this is an old master plan from 1988, and it, based on what I read in that master plan, it looked like that these were two former homes that were converted into office condominiums, which I thought was interesting. And there's a building on the left and the right as you enter the plaza. The applicant's building is on the left as you enter into the development. And the applicant's suite is actually on the backside of the building. So this is Upper Hembry Road out here. The applicant's suite is on the backside of this building. Other businesses operating in the office condos include Alpharetta Psychiatric Services, Revitalize UMD, BMI Surgical Institute, and Extra Mile Dentist. Far East Beauty is a new business. The applicant's business provides the following services: facials, waxing, microblading, semi-permanent makeup, lash extensions, makeup, and nails. According to the applicant, the services are by appointment only, hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the applicant anticipates between four to six employees. There is a max size to the suite for a spa services business. That's 4,000 square feet. The applicant's suite is 2,576 square feet, so they are below the maximum size. There's also a 2,000-foot distance requirement for spa services, so no other spa service businesses within 2,000 feet of the property. We did look at that, and I have the spa service and massage establishment map up here. Any of the tags with the yellow tag indicate a spa establishment in the city that has been approved. The applicant's location is actually right here, and you can see that not only are there no spa service businesses in the area in the city, of course, the 2,000-foot distance, which is this blue kind of shaded area around that yellow tag, that represents 2,000 feet. None of that overlaps the property. Also, there are no conflicting uses within 300 feet of the property, so conflicting uses within the definition of spa service. You cannot be located within 300 feet of Old Milton Parkway, Highway 9, a residence, or a church. There is a residence across the street, however, that residence is 320 feet away, so it does exceed the 300 feet. And then the nearest home in Taylor Oaks to the east is 340 feet away. So there are no conflicting uses within that 300-foot distance. This item was shown to the public at the community zoning information meeting held on June 9th. There were no public comments. Staff has received seven letters of support, which includes the condo association approval letter that we emailed out earlier this week. We did receive one objection from a resident in the area. I believe it was from Birch Hollow subdivision. And there were concerns from that resident that the business could be a front for illegal activity. Staff reviewed the applicant's proposal and finds that the conditional use does not conflict with the established criteria. The proposed use exists in similar office condo developments in the city. We located a Healing Touch Day Spa and Organic Sugaring and Waxing, both located at 1130 Powers Place. That's up on North Main Street, south of Mayfield Road. And then we have Tropical Bliss Spa and Beauty Bar at 5755 North Point Parkway. That's out in the North Point area, north of Haynes Bridge on North Point Parkway. Both of those, all three of those businesses are operating in office condominium developments. In addition, as I mentioned before, no conflicting uses in the area and no spa services businesses within 2,000 feet. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. One, spa services shall be added as a conditional use at 1115 Upper Hembry Road, Suite A, and limited to no more than 2,576 square feet. Two, conditional use approval shall be limited to Far East Beauty. No additional spa services businesses or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. Three, spa services shall be limited to facials, semi-permanent makeup, microblading, waxing, lash extensions, makeup, and nails. Four, hours of operation shall be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Five, window signage shall be limited to 10% or less of the window area, no lighting window trim. And then condition number six, as a result of my review of this request, I pulled that old master plan from 1988. And there was a condition, condition number 21, in file number MP-88-05 Oswald Upper Hembry Road Master Plan. There was a condition in there that limited the development to only one ground sign. And as you can see on this picture, it's hard to see from this view, but there are walls at the entrance to this development, and both walls have a sign on the wall. So there are actually two ground signs at this location, not one. This shows you the ground sign on your left as you enter into the development. There's an identical sign advertising or displaying the businesses that are in the other office building on the right-hand side. So condition six says, "In compliance with condition number 21 related to file number MP-8805 Oswald Upper Hembry Master Plan, one of the two existing ground signs at the project entrance shall be removed prior to the issuance of a business license for Far East Beauty. Remaining development ground sign and wall shall be pressure washed and/or painted, and a decorative planning bed shall be installed at the base of the sign." So we're not saying that the entire wall has to come down. The wall can remain. It's the sign panel. One of the sign panels would need to come down. And that concludes the staff presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Michael, I have a question about the sign that you said that it has, it lists the, obviously, the other services that are there, the other medical services.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, I didn't look at that sign, but is that way on both sides? So will they be eliminating that for those services?
Yeah. So this sign, a similar sign is on the other side of the entrance. I was also concerned with that, but they do have secondary monument signs within the development that also display the businesses operating in the two buildings. Let me see if I can show you that real quick. Here we go. So this is the applicant's building. So as we enter off of Upper Hembry Road, you can see there's a sign right here. There's an identical secondary sign on the other side of the driveway identifying businesses in that building as well. So the thought was, is that they could put those businesses, if they're not on that sign further up by the road, on the secondary sign.
Okay.
So that condition 21 was truly about the project entrance? Does it refer to any internal signage?
It does not refer to any internal signage.
That's where I was confused.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. One is, how do you measure the 2,000 square, I mean, foot separation? Is it a GIS or is it a ground? Because I see the circle around the property. How is it measured?
It's just on the map. This is just a GIS map.
GIS map.
And we always measure the distance, both the 2,000-foot and the 300-foot distance. It's always measured in the same manner, from the front door of the spa services business to the front door of either the conflicting use or the other spa services business, in a straight-line distance.
But it doesn't, it's straight line with a GIS map doesn't consider the terrain?
As a crow fly.
We just, yeah, it's just measured, and it's just measured in a straight-line distance, yeah.
Is that how the code reads? Not that this is a material question, I just wanted to...
Yes, we're following the code.
Okay. The second question is related to illegal activity. Have we had any such case in Alpharetta? I remember several years ago, when we changed the code, there were some concerns, but not that I remember lately.
I'm not aware of any illegal activity going on at these types of businesses. We did route this to Public Safety, and they didn't have any concerns with the business. We always do, you know, spa services. We checked with them on the liquor store application that came before you recently. So they are usually involved with our public hearing reviews.
Okay. And the third question is regarding condition number six. The condition regarding the ground sign was imposed on the whole development. Who is the applicant here? Is it, who is applying for the spa in relationship to the development?
The applicant, well, these are condo, these are office condos, so they would be, they're available for purchase. They're individually owned. But there is a condo association here, and I did speak to the applicant about that particular condition. I was a little bit weary of putting that on them, but they have talked to, it's my understanding, they've talked to the condo association, and they understand that it's just a sign panel, and that they were okay with that. The applicant is here and may have some additional information in that regard, but we did discuss this with the applicant.
That was the very reason I asked that question, whether we would impose that on them and not a code enforcement issue with the condo association.
It's a condition of zoning that council placed on this property. So if need be, if that condition was not placed on this particular applicant, we still have the ability with code enforcement to enforce that condition.
Would that be, would that not be the proper path, instead of a condition of zoning, to enforce the code by having them either remove and...
It's, yeah, I mean, that could be a better way of handling it. It's certainly an option for...
That's what I would think, because this is not a new condition. This is an existing condition, already in the code, memorialized. And the applicant in this case is, I would assume, a tenant. So anyways, those are my thoughts regarding condition six. Any further questions?
I have a question, Michael. On the conditions, other than, I know in the not-that-distant past, we approved a spa. Other than the hours, I mean, other than the sign, signage, and maybe the hours, are the rest of the conditions approximately the same as previously approved spas here in Alpharetta?
Yes. Conditions one through five are very much the same conditions with the specific information put in, correct.
I also want to visit the sign question, because that is a HOA ownership. So is there other wording that might be appropriate here? You know, that, I mean, what if the HOA or the owners say, "Forget it. We don't want to pressure wash the sign." I drive by there every day, and so I see that they're doing some work in that condo building and stuff like that, and it's old and it needs some work. But, you know, how is that addressed if the owners say, "Forget it, we're not going to do it"?
Well, the owners, the owners couldn't do that if this is put in with this condition and this application is eventually approved by city council. So they wouldn't be able to get around that. Today, we could, code enforcement could go out there and enforce the condition, which said only one ground sign. We couldn't, I don't know that we can necessarily make them pressure wash the existing wall or paint it to clean it up. It's highly doubtful that we could do that, but we could certainly enforce removing the one sign panel, one of the two sign panels from the wall, based on the condition.
I think that's probably the appropriate path to take through code enforcement, instead of putting a condition on a tenant for space in the building, because that previous condition was on the whole development, not with this particular applicant.
Okay.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you. The applicant can come forward and make a presentation. There is sun coming on my face on this side. I guess both of us, but I'm more exposed than you are.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Nice to meet all of you. I'm David Weiser. This is my wife, Hungbo Gore. She goes by Gigi or Gore Gore. I'm the applicant. It's actually her facility that we're working on here. And so if we have any questions, we'd love to answer them, but I know we spent a little time talking about the conditions. Michael reviewed them with me. We're in agreement with any of those conditions, even the number six that's had a few, a little bit of a discussion. So we're fine with all of them, and we can comply with them, no problem at all. So we're just happy to have the opportunity to get this thing going. It seems like it's taken us a little while to get here, but it's all good things, so...
Do you have another facility like this anywhere else?
No. This is the first one. So I own my own business over in Peach Street Corners. It's a sign company. And Gore Gore's wanted to do this for a long time, and we went around and around looking for a lot of different places, and it seemed like we always came back to retail, but she was pretty adamant about she wanted to buy it and own it. And so that's how we ended up in this condo situation. It was an opportunity that you could buy it and own it. What we didn't understand was that you can't really run her kind of beauty services out of those, that space. And so that's what put us on this path. And so we've had a lot of discussion about, well, what if we don't get approved? What do we do then? And so there's been a lot of that, but it looks like it's going pretty positive. So she's, I got to give her credit. I'm doing the application because English is my first language. Her English is quite good, and if you get a chance to ask her questions, you'll see. But she's the driving force behind it. This is what she's wanted to do with her life, and she's came to America and saved her money. And I said, you know, if you want to buy a building, I'll help you, but you're pretty much on your own to do it. And so every time something comes up, she just says, "Yeah, I'm going to do it." And so she does it. So that's how we got here today. So it's been good.
Does this type of work require any certifications?
Yeah, actually, I'm a licensed esthetician. So I went to school here a couple of years ago.
Can you get close to the microphone, please?
Sorry. Yeah, I'm a licensed esthetician. So I went to school here, I think it was 2016. Yeah, I graduated from ISN, so I'm a certified esthetician.
Okay. And I was going to ask this to Michael, whether we do require any certifications for spas. I know we do for massage parlors.
Yes, we do require that spa services businesses, as well as massage therapy businesses, get licensed through the city. And so if the applicant were to be, receive approval, before they get a business license, they would need to apply for a spa license.
And it doesn't have to be a condition. It's already in the code.
This is already in the code, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? No questions.
You guys are welcome to come by for a facial.
Yeah. See, the ladies are so happy because...
Exactly.
My, all clients, they love me.
And it's not going to be painful, because you're sorry.
Very relaxing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You. I am going to open this up for public comments. I see two people in the audience. Are you here for comment, or you're the next applicant? Or you're just here?
Absorbing. We own the property across the street.
Oh, okay.
All match, bet very likely.
Well, the meeting is open for comment. If you'd like to comment on this application, you're welcome to do so, but you don't have to. All right. No one in support, and no one in opposition. So I will ask the applicant whether he has anything else to add before I turn this over to the board for consideration.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Nothing to add. So it's up to the board for a motion and/or any discussion or questions.
If there's no discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. And before I make a motion, since the applicant has no problem with condition number six, I will make a motion to approve CU-21-07 Far East Beauty/1115 Upper Hembry Road, subject to the following conditions as set forth by staff, including one through six.
Let's second the motion.
A motion has been made and it's properly secured. Any further discussions? And the reason I brought that up, and it's, whether or not the applicant has a problem with it or not, is a matter of, you know, precedent and the proper way of doing it. I will rely on staff to guide us on that. If it's not a problem, I have no problem with it. I just wouldn't want to impose a condition that they are not responsible for this. If the condo association decides not to do it, then they are penalized for it, but they are not the condo association. So not a big deal for me, because they agreed to it, but is it the right way to do it? And I will throw the question back at Michael to make, to tell us what they are talking about.
The only thing code enforcement can't do is do the beauty strip or the landscaping and pressure washing. So that would be the one piece of it that couldn't be enforced by code enforcement. So that's, you know, you'd hope the condo association does the right thing, but we don't have a mechanism to enforce that part of it.
Correct. Okay. Did you have anything else to add, Michael? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Or in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. It's going before city council on July the 26th. All right. Next item on the agenda is PH-21-13 UDC text amendments. And this has a lot to do with chickens in the backyard. We like to have fun with this, and whatever you do, have fun with it.
It's good to have fun.
Yes. There is no law that says you can't. I was directed to you.
I realize that. Thank you. Chickens.
So just to recap, we were actually here in March with recommended changes to the Unified Development Code. And at that time, we were recommending that chickens be permitted on half-acre lots instead of one-acre lots. And we didn't continue this through to the city council. When staff was meeting before we went to council, we actually looked at the code that we had, and it had the one-acre requirement, minimum requirement, but it was restricting it to certain residential zoning districts. So what we're proposing now, in place of the change that we had in March, is to take to council a change to the Unified Development Code that would still keep the one-acre minimum requirement, but we don't designate the zoning category. And that way, if somebody is in an R12 zoning, but they have an acre, they could, you know, have chickens, because they meet the size, of course, always still, you know, subject to the covenants that they have for their subdivision. And that is the change that we're recommending tonight. We also added something else, and you can see the last sentence. It would still be, "Backyard chickens on minimum one-acre properties with a single-family detached dwelling limited to no more than six chickens," and that's the same, "and no roosters allowed. Associated structures, chicken coop, run, et cetera, shall maintain a minimum 25-foot setback from the rear and side property lines," and that's still the same. So what is new is that the chicken coop and run shall not exceed nine feet in height. That part's not new. Nine feet in height is the last one. "No chickens shall be permitted within any undisturbed water buffers, wetlands, or regulated floodplain." And the reason we added that is, we actually had a resident that has, did some really good research for us and provided that to us about the impacts to having that, chickens look near a waterway, and the impacts, of course, to the water. So we did check with our floodplain manager and the public works department, and she did recommend that we add that sentence in here. So we are recommending that that be included. The resident that also provided us comment asked that we require a permitting process for chickens, but we don't, we're not recommending that. But I just wanted to make sure that you knew that they did comment, that they wish we would have a permitting process. So we're not recommending a permitting process, just that the one-acre minimum stays, but it's not a specific zoning district, in case you have bigger lots in different zoning districts. And then, of course, if somebody has a half-acre lot, they can come forward with a variance if they don't meet the land size. But as it's currently written, if you didn't, if you don't have one acre in your specific zoning category, you would not be able to come forward and request a variance. And if you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
What is the definition of a property? A parcel?
You mean as it's...
Yes.
How, well, it says backyard chickens on minimum one-acre property.
And the property means...
It's the square footage of the parcel. So it would have to, the identifying factor is acre.
Does it, and if we adding the R12s and higher densities... Does it, and if we are in the R-12s and higher densities, does, do the number of structures in that one acre matter?
It says, "Single-family detached dwelling," so it says one-acre property with a single-family detached dwelling.
So just one...
One house, one acre.
One house, one acre.
Right.
Regardless as to zoning, if they get two properties in there, they would not, no, two houses?
Two houses would have, you couldn't, you know, two houses, you would have to split the property, so you wouldn't meet the one-acre requirement.
Okay, all right, that's clear.
Kathy, on the, on a previous meeting, we had a big discussion group about the chicken ordinance, and...
Correct.
A person that lived in this same zone of where we're talking across from the Old Harry's, had less than the acre, and what was the final disposition? And how is this going to affect people like that?
Right, and that's a good question. So that, that particular resident had an R-12 zoning. They still don't meet the one-acre requirement, but it does, you know, this is, it would open it up to where they can request a variance. They had no path prior to, to request a variance, and of course, a variance is based, you know, on every individual, the own merits of that particular lot. You know, does the neighborhood support it? Do the neighbors support it? So it would, this, this change would allow somebody that has less than an acre, that is on a R-12 lot, to seek a variance and make their case.
If there's no permitting process, then a person or group or family that has some chickens, it's on a need-to-know basis, that if they're less than the ordinance, that unless it's brought to the city's attention or something like that, it's, just like many things, I guess, but in the chicken ordinance world, this is kind of a moot point. I mean, they, it has to be known, there's no permitting process going to happen, generally speaking.
Correct, and, and right now, it is, you know, the code enforcement will find some instances where there's chickens on less than an acre, and of course, they have to deal with those cases. I would think that if somebody comes through and asks for a variance from the one-acre requirement, then there would be specific conditions placed on that particular approval, and it may be that that approval, because it is variance-based, has conditions that may require a special permit. But I don't think in general, we would want to process chicken permits for the one acre, if they meet the requirements.
And then that process, it would go straight to city council for that variance, right? Or does it come back to us?
It would, for, it would depend on the size of the reduction, so if it was less than a 50% reduction, they could go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Over that, then it would go, you're correct, then it would go to city council. Because if it's just a variant only, it would not go to the planning commission.
I would think, as we go forward, we would have to review after a year and see how much we're dealing with.
Certainly. And that's why, you know, with this particular, all of our recommendations from staff are just based on what we're seeing in the community, and we don't have a big issue with chickens, because most people don't have roosters. So I'm sure that there are chickens that exist on properties that are less than an acre, but because they don't have roosters, we don't know, or the neighbors are okay with it. So we always, you know, look to see if there's something we need to change in the code, just like there's new uses that come up, you know, every couple of years, it didn't exist a couple of years ago, so we have to put those in our chart and bring those to your attention.
Do you know if other cities require permitting?
The, the research that was sent to me by, by the resident, that it was a permitting process in Fairfax. So we checked surrounding cities, and we didn't find a permitting process in surrounding cities. Okay.
Was there any outcome on that? The people over there by the Old Harry's, did the person keep their chickens? Is that still in abeyance, or...
It's still on hold. We haven't made them remove the chickens. We, with that one, we were asking him to come forward with a change to the code that kind of met his needs, but after talking amongst, with staff, we thought, no, we need to make a recommendation that we think's, you know, appropriate to the code, and then he'll have the path. If this is approved, he will have the path to go forward, but we didn't want to make a change that was for a specific person, we wanted to make a change that just made sense for the city.
And I'll only add one thing, Kathy, just because of the amendment that is shown on the screen was not what was included in our pre-read with that undisturbed buffer, so make sure that that's included.
Correct. Yes, I think, I think we just...
I think the floodplain is good after dealing with what we were dealing with over on our end of the property, or city.
Any further comments? All right, anyone would like to speak to this in the audience? None whatsoever. All right, I will turn this over to the board for motion or further discussion. And we, there's several other places, the language is deleted, that was in the previous amendments.
Right. So I'll make a motion to approve PH-21-13 UDC text amendments regarding supplementary regulations, accessory backyard chickens located in residential zoning districts, with the text that is shown on the screen, including the buffers, wetlands and regulated footpath.
A motion has been made and properly secured. Any further discussion? Hearing none, or in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries. Anything else you need to bring to our attention on the board we'd like to discuss? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
None of you, Michael.